I'd like to call this meeting to order, and the item on our agenda tonight is to go into work session, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors hereby enters into work session for the purpose of discussion following storm water management. Do we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Do we have a second? With the substitute clerks, please, called rather well. Supervisor Gabor. Supervisor Creed. Supervisor King. Supervisor Biggs.
Aye.
Chair Brown.
Aye.
Five ayes, we're in work session.
I'll tell Vicky you've done all right, Cole.
Thanks. Well, Mr. Chair, this evening, Mike Lawless from Draper Aiden is with us. As you're well aware, we are moving towards developing requirements for storm water management in the county, and we also have the, as I call it, the double barrel of storm water management and MS4 requirements, which is another issue related to storm water, but we're having to deal with both of them. And we have a presentation for you tonight, so, Mike, I'm gonna let, introduce you and let you share all the wonderful news. Mike has the checklist that I shared with the board briefly at the work session there in front of you, so...
I won't go through that in detail. It does two things. One, it shows you that we do have a plan, much less complying with the regulations, and it also shows you how complicated it is to comply. This is not a simple regulatory program. And I was here before the holidays and gave you an introduction to the new storm water regulations, except for you, Mr. Gable, this is the first time you're hearing this, perhaps. Tonight, I want to go into a little more detail in the MS4 program to go through some of the specifics there. And this is a work session, so please, if you have questions as I'm going through, feel free to interrupt me as we go. Just to kind of go through some of the acronyms, this is like learning a new language anytime you get a new regulatory program. There's two components to the new storm water regulations. One is the Virginia Storm Water Management Program, the VSMP, and the other is the MS4. Part of the Storm Water Management Program is putting development practices in place that will help filter and clean storm water, both reduce the quantity of storm water runoff and clean that water up before it gets into our water sources. And those practices are called Best Management Practices, the BMPs. And there's many different types of practices that accomplish this, and in fact, DEQ has developed a clear house of methods that are approved for treating storm water. They include bio retention, permeable vapors, and collecting storm water for renews. And when these techniques are used in developing properties, that's through a process known as Low-Impact Development, or LID. The MS4 stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System, and that's the program that I'm gonna go into in a little bit more detail tonight, go through the permit requirements that are specific to that MS4 program. The MS4 program has a different twist to it when your storm water is being discharged into a water body that has a TMDL established on that water body, your total maximum daily load. That's the amount of pollutant that that water body can assimilate without killing the fish or degrading the water quality. And you hear a lot of news about the Chesapeake Bay TMDL, because that's the biggest one out there and the one that's effective in all the states around the bay, but any water body can have a TMDL established. And in fact, Scruggles Creek, Crab Creek, Mills Creek, all have TMDLs established that will affect your MS4 program. And the TMDL results, as I said, in a load of a pollutant that can be assimilated by a stream. Each pollutant is assigned a waste load allocation, and each permitted discharger, the discharges in that water body, is allocated a portion of that waste load allocation, and then you have to demonstrate that your storm water is not discharging more pollutants than your So this is the new storm water management program. As I said, there's two components to this, the VSMP, or Virginia Storm Water Management Program, and the MS4 program. Just briefly to go over the VSMP again, that deals with construction practices, it looks at review of plans prior to construction to make sure that they're gonna be handling their storm water appropriately. It requires inspections of the construction site to make sure that they've built the storm water structures that they've committed to. It also, on the long-term, requires a long-term maintenance agreements so those storm water features are kept operational through the life of the project. And it will, as part of that, you'll have post-construction BMP, or Best Management Practice, inspections. And then there's an enforcement arm to that whole program to allow the county to enforce those practices, to make sure that they're in place.
And Mike, what I might add there is, the county already has an erosion and sediment control program, so we do some of those things now, but this is a whole other level of regulation and enforcement, especially on the follow-up end after a project's completed.
That's right. So now we'll shift gears to the MS4 program, which is Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. And that's a system that collects storm water and then discharges it at a point source to a water body. And that could be everything from a network of pipes to a network of storm water ditches or swales that collect that storm water and discharge. The permit was issued late last year, and one of the first deadlines that comes up is a requirement for a registration statement to be submitted later this month along with the $4,000 annual fee. The next thing that's required is an implementation plan that shows or outlines how the county is going to implement what are called the six minimum control measures, including the VSMP. And outlined on that long scroll down there are the minimum control measures of how the county will step through each of those and meet all the deadlines that are outlined in the permit from now through 2018. There's also an annual reporting required that shows how your program is applying. So the VSMP is your local program. There's, again, two components to it. There's the one-time review, which is analogous to the erosion and sediment control issues where you have a plan review and then construction inspections, and then there's the new twist to it all, which is the long-term requirements for maintenance of the BMP features, inspections of those BMP features, and then enforcement to make sure that they're kept operational through the life of the facility. So the MS4 program is not new. It's been around since 1990, but initially, it only applied to large cities and urban counties. The Phase 2 program for smaller, more rural localities came into effect in 2003, and Montgomery County was pulled into the program based on the results of the 2010 census, which identified urbanized areas based on population throughout the county. And because of the population in those areas, those areas of the county became designated as urbanized areas and therefore are required to comply with the MS4 program. The Phase 1 program back in 1990 had individual permits, where a large city would have its own permit designed specifically for that city. For the smaller Phase 2 localities, it's a general permit. Everybody's got the same permit, the same requirements to meet that permit, and that permit is issued on a five-year cycle. So everybody that fit those Phase 2 small MS4 communities just got the permit at the end of last year and now on a five-year cycle to comply with that permit.
Mike, can you name a couple of other jurisdictions, along with Montgomery County, that got swept into this latest?
Yes, Bedford County, Stanton, some of the universities, some of the smaller colleges. In fact, oddly, there are some school systems in the state that got pulled under this that nobody can really figure out how they got pulled in. But there are, in this area, Abbeville County, Amherst County, a lot of the surrounding more rural counties got pulled in.
So it wasn't just us?
It was not just you, not at all. And again, this latest permit cycle runs from 2014.
Let, let, yes. You're talking about Amherst and down in that direction, is anybody further west?
Yes, Galax was just pulled into it.
Yeah, that would make sense, 'cause they're big.
There are a couple others, too, that are sitting behind it this far, but we're working with the city of Galax.
What about the Washington County area where you have Abington?
Yes.
Oh, I think that would have been another one.
It was a pretty, I've seen the list somewhere, but it was a pretty long list of folks that had not been in MS4 prior to the census.
And we're gonna see this continue. As each new census comes out, there'll be newer urbanized areas named, and some of the more rural counties that weren't pulled in under this iteration will be pulled in under the next. So it's just a matter of time until most counties in the state will follow. In Montgomery County, the urbanized areas that are subject to the MS4 are in Crisis Ford, Marimack, Valhalla, Pepper's Square, Palm Creek, we have to go to Corbin, and House. So it's not the entire county that's affected by the MS4, it's just these urbanized areas. The VSMP, on the other hand, the Virginia Storm Water Management Program applies to the entire county. And the areas, these urbanized areas that are subject to the MS4 are, again, in those urbanized areas that are discharged to waters of the state or other MS4s. And the other MS4s in this area are Blacksburg, Christiansburg, Radford, and Virginia Tech. So if you have a facility that collected storm water that discharged into a creek in the urbanized area, that then would be subject to the MS4. In another area, if you're an area adjacent to Blacksburg or school facilities in Blacksburg that collects that storm water and discharges it to Blacksburg's system, which is an MS4, that county property then becomes subject to the MS4 requirements. So there's a couple ways to put it.
How much coordination is required between jurisdictions?
The more coordination, the better, because it's ultimately gonna save you money, because there may be things that Blacksburg and Christiansburg are doing regarding public involvement or public participation, that you can ride on the coattails and not have to recreate things for yourselves. So this is one of those things where the more everybody's talking to each other, the more beneficial it's gonna be.
So you're saying Blacksburg, Christiansburg's already doing what we're getting ready to do?
Yes, that's correct. Again, the requirements for the MS4 permit, the registration statement is due on February 17th. The implementation planning will be required to get started, and that will outline how you implement the six minimum control measures, which I will explain to you here shortly. The plan will also outline how you intend to comply with the TMDLs and the waste load allocations. Now, the TMDLs that are already in place were in place before the county was in MS4. So the TMDLs do not name the county as a discharger and therefore do not assign an allocation to the county. But these TMDLs are under perpetual state of revision and going on to the next phase, to the implementation phase or corrective action phase. And as those TMDLs move to another phase, have effectively reopened, now that the county is in MS4, the county will very likely be named in those TMDLs as an MS4 discharger and will be assigned a waste load allocation. So this is a requirement that today does not apply to the county who knows it's coming. So we'll be planning for it. So as those TMDLs do assign a pollutant allocation to the county, we'll be ready to demonstrate how the county's gonna comply with this.
So the TMDLs, if Blacksburg, Christiansburg, for instance, they have got whatever they have to slow the stuff down, slow the water down, then where does it kick in between the towns and the county?
With Blacksburg is a TMDL in Scruggles Creek. Blacksburg was already in MS4, where the Scruggles Creek TMDL was done. So when that TMDL report was written, Blacksburg got a number for seven, said you can only discharge X amount of sediment in the Scruggles Creek or you're gonna violate. So they have to demonstrate through the BMPs that they use that they're reducing sediment discharge. For the areas of the county that are in the MS4 urbanized areas that discharge in the Scruggles Creek, the county will be assessed an allocation that's different from Blacksburg's allocation, but where your facility is discharging to Scruggles Creek, you would have to demonstrate that you would be the difference. But the number that's assigned to you and the number that's assigned to Blacksburg will probably be different.
Different, yeah.
Based on the drainage areas that are discharging.
What about Christiansburg?
Similarly, Christiansburg and Crab. So it's gonna be based on where that discharge port is, and the allocation is gonna be divided up based on drainage area and the amount of pollutants that Christiansburg is discharging versus the smaller urbanized area that the county is discharging. Because Christiansburg, the drainage area, you know, may be in the majority of the acreage of the town. For the county's MS4 at this point, it's only gonna be that smaller urbanized area. So you'll have a smaller allocation than Christiansburg. Does that make sense? Again, the $4,000 annual fee needs to be submitted, yes?
Question. $4,000 annual fee, that means that Blacksburg will pay that fee, Christiansburg will pay that fee, and Montgomery County will pay that fee?
Yes.
Annually, every 12 months?
Correct.
Yeah.
It's gonna get worse.
It's called local assistance to the state.
Yeah, yeah.
And there is also an annual reporting requirement, and there'll be a requirement that those annual reports are posted on the website. So if you're interested in seeing what Christiansburg or Blacksburg has been doing for the last several years, their MS4 annual reports are on the web. So if you're having trouble sleeping one night, we'll help you pull those, and we'll put you right up. So now I'd like to go through what these six minimum control measures are that are As I indicated a few minutes ago, a component of that is public education and outreach on storm water management and reducing storm water impact, but also actively involving the public in the storm water programs. And that's where I think approaching this with a more regional approach, talking with Blacksburg, with Christiansburg, with Virginia Tech, they are all required to do this public outreach as well. So if you pool your resources and do it all at once, it can help save some towns.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Could you give an example of what public participation would be?
It's wholly, it could be holding seminars to talk about what the county program requires and get input from the development community and public about what types of BMPs they might like to use during projects. It could be taking a group of students out to some storm water features, to a rain garden or bio retention basins, and explaining how they're designed, constructed, and...
Is that outreach or is that participation?
Uh, I guess...
Are there clear definitions there, or that's what I'm kinda asking, I mean, like, what?
That's a good question. I don't, this is a new regulatory program, and guidance has not been issued, and the regulation does not define the difference between public outreach and public participation at this point. I suspect the guidance, which is under preparation by DEQ, I suspect that they will define. If it's like other regulatory programs that DEQ has, it's pretty loosely defined. They want the public to be involved and give the public the opportunity to participate, and if they're given the opportunity but don't participate, then you've fulfilled your obligation. So it could be that the public participation or public involvement satisfies both of them.
Mike, one thing that might be good to point out as well, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the agency that's traditionally been handling most of this has been DCR, Department of Conservation and Recreation. Within the last year...
July 1st.
Within the last year, the state transitioned all the responsibility for storm water management from the Department of Conservation and Recreation over to the Department of Environmental Quality, DEQ. So at the state level, they're switching agencies as to who's gonna be responsible for this, and quite candidly, I mean, we've gotten enough information that we know what we've gotta do to get going, but there's still a lot of stuff that's up in the air at the state level as well as to what their expectations are.
That's right. And they transferred a lot of the people from DCR over to DEQ. Unfortunately, a lot of them have since left. And most of the people that left were the ones that really understood the program. So it's been a real challenge, and in fact, right now, DEQ is trying to hire somebody to come in and train their staff about their own regulations. So it's, it is definitely a learn-as-you-go type program at this point. A couple of the other minimum control measures, illicit discharge detection and elimination. You don't want people or facilities discharging non-storm water into your storm water system. So part of it is mapping your entire system and identifying where you might have non-storm water discharged that's entering your system and then eliminating that discharge.
Matter of fact, the way you can tell a lot of communities that are in MS4, if you ever walk up to a storm drain like that one on the left, if it's got a little plaque or something on it that says, "Don't, just don't," they're in MS4, 'cause that's one of the requirements, is you have to label your storm water.
Well, how far downstream are you responsible for?
You'll be responsible to the county line. Where that, where that...
From the discharge point.
Discharge point.
So the town, okay, and so the towns are going to be basically responsible to their, whether, some of them...
That enters, that enters the county, and then it's, that's your...
And then from the town, so it would be, checking spots would then become wherever the town was...
Crossing into the camp, yep.
And then ours would be wherever, at the end of ours, wherever we're going into Runoff County, if we're going that way.
Right. And another major component of this program is managing storm water runoff at the construction site. And this is over and above the erosion and sediment.
ENS, yeah.
This is much more, but that can be a real big contributor of sediment runoff. So it's a, it's a real important component. And then this is really the new twist to the construction angle on storm water management, and that's the post-construction management of storm water in the new developments and the redevelopment areas. And that, you know, that's something the ENS would look at, the site conditions and management of storm water during the construction activities, but once they were done, because construction properties was active, they were already done. Under this program, you have to keep managing that storm water and managing this storm water.
Well, the "you," who is the "you"? That's who is...
The "you," the "you" will be the county.
Right, so "you" is people that have to be paid to do this.
Correct.
And how much time is required? I mean, like, when you have a site, and you have construction, seems like, how, I mean, how often do you have to go and visit and do all this stuff?
There will be some guidelines that are issued on that. You'll have to go, beginning with a construction project, and based on the length of that construction project, you'll have to go periodically during the active construction. But then there will be at least annual inspection requirements after that to be sure that the project is...
And so every time you do a visit, there's a report involved that has to be written?
That's right.
Yeah. She was brought up on the construction site. We had, the county had to send people out and look.
You either have to send people out to look or hire people or hire private contractors to look.
And we, and we do that to some degree now. Again, we're doing erosion and sediment control now, so when our inspectors go out, they're doing some of that now. The big challenge with this is, you know, when a project's complete and we're signed off on it, we're done with that. Traditionally, we're done with it. But now, we'll have to have somebody go back at least once a year to check on making sure the storm water, the BMPs, as they're called, are working as they're designed. It's gonna be a lot of additional work for follow-up.
Can the county go back on whoever's done the construction and charge them for our personnel doing that?
You could. What you wanna do with all this, though, is not treat developers differently than the surrounding communities. So that's another reason to be talking to the surrounding communities, so that you can all remain competitive on the development aspect. But yes, somebody has to pay for this. It's gonna be a combination of the taxpayer, the developers, the purchases of properties, and you. It's not an inexpensive program. One of the things that we're doing now is going through that laundry list of tasks and putting hours into those tasks, identifying where the county has capacity, where their existing staff to handle that, where they need to hire new staff to handle that, where a consulting company like ours can help them to handle that, but really looking at what the overall effort, people-wise, is gonna be required. Because it's not, it's not something you can, you know, grab one or two people off the street and...
Is there any guidelines to say what other jurisdictions are paying that have been in, already in the system doing that?
Most of that information is public on their website when you get into their budget. It's ranging anywhere from, you know, initial startup of maybe $100,000 to $200,000 a year on up to millions of dollars a year for some of the larger budgets.
There's a couple of ways that we're gonna be looking at it. Some communities, a few communities have said that they're just gonna absorb the cost into their general fund. My guesstimate, and this is just a guesstimate from Montgomery County, is we're gonna be looking at several, several hundred thousand dollars a year to manage this program. That's a big bite to absorb in the general fund. Other communities have gone completely fee-based. They're saying it's based on square footage, it's based on development, and they're assessing fees. One of the things that we've got to talk about and figure out over the next couple of months is, as Mike just said, how do we compare with the other communities? Because if you adopt a solely fee-based structure and your fees are, I mean, if they're expensive, then developers say, "Well, I'm not coming to Montgomery County, 'cause their fees are too high." But if you put it on the other side, then is it fair to folks that aren't developing to have to pay as part of their tax rate for these programs? So one of the things we'll be talking about in a subsequent work session is... So one of the things we'll be talking about in a subsequent work session is how are we gonna pay for this and what is the fairest and most equitable way to do it? And we can't really have a lot of that discussion because, as Mike said, right now, that entire list has been reviewed with staff and we're identifying, yes, we've got capacity to do that, no, we're gonna have to have outside help to do that, or we need to add staff. We've already determined without a doubt, we've gotta add at least one. But it may be more than that before we're done, that we're still working all that through.
And the fee would only be, if a fee was implemented, it would only be assessed on the county residents, not the two towns, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so when you look at the bulk of the population and populations of Montgomery County, then Christiansburg and then Blacksburg and then-
Because Blacksburg, I believe, is talking about implementing a fee-based system for the town residents.
Right.
Yeah. And I don't- haven't heard what Christiansburg's setup is. I don't- I don't know.
I imagine they're gonna have to do the same, just out of necessity.
Most- most every community I've ever been associated with of any size usually goes to the fee base because it's just such a burden on the-
Right.
-on the general fund, just to throw it all in the general fund.
Well, because of the people out here now, you know, we're trying to get water and sewage to them. They gotta pay for that. So, you know, unless somebody will come in and pay for that for them, I don't know how we're gonna choose people to pile it on.
And then the final minimum control measure deals with municipal operations. We'll be outlining some pollution prevention, the good housekeeping measures that the county staff can use as they go about their normal operations with county facilities. We talked a little bit about TMBLs already. Again, just briefly, there are TMBLs on Pratt Creek, Mills Creek, Tubers Creek, and Roanoke River. So the county's urbanized areas do discharge into these water bodies with TMBLs. So eventually, this will be a requirement for the county to comply with these discharge limits. Primarily, they are for sediment and bacteria. So there'll need to be some sort of BMP or filtering mechanism to clean that stormwater as it leaves, the outfall enters these water bodies. And then part of the annual reporting is to demonstrate what BMPs you have in place, show that you maintain them so that they're operated appropriately. And then based on the type of BMP, you're given a default percent reduction of each pollutant, so you can show based on that function of BMP, you're setting the load is meeting that limit. At some point, it might be beneficial to actually collect a sample of your stormwater and have it tested to quantitatively show what you're meeting in that outreach, if you get in a situation where the default values aren't showing for you. It's not a requirement at some point.
So when you have a farm and you have all these animals and it rains and all the water makes all their, you know, go into the stream, so do all that count against the county or how does that work?
Uh, that is unclear at this point. It does not count against the county MS4 program because it's not a point source, non-point source. Those agricultural sources are being handled with money that's available to try to keep the cattle and what is out, it's a long, slow process. If those agricultural areas are within your urbanized areas or within those MS4 areas, then it will have to be addressed. Again, it's hard to say exactly how it will be addressed, but there will be something that we can do.
And that's gonna be real interesting because the areas that are affected for us are Merrimack and Plum Creek and-
That's what I was thinking.
I mean, there's agricultural areas within those MS4 areas, so that's-
On the positive side, there is a state program that has money to assist those farmers in putting some measures in place to help reduce that level. And that's a program that has continued to get funded each year. And I would think with the focus on stormwater, but hopefully that is something that will not get lied out of the state.
Well, aren't they still doing programs for farmers where you can go in, big businesses can go in, bring their level of being in compliance up to where they are compliant for points that they can sell?
Yes, the mutual exchange of credit.
Right. So-
That's- that whole program is really in its infancy, but there may be some application to that in the future. Right now, they're really- that program is really focused on just the bay watershed and less so to the areas outside of the watershed.
But they still won't let the bay on the watershed going the other way from where we're not going that way?
Yes.
Yes.
Exactly.
This is the schedule that we put together through permit period from 2014 through June 30th, 2018. First permit period areas. But it shows content education and outreach, public involvement and participation extended through the entire life of the permit. The illicit discharge detection and elimination, that takes place in the first two years of the permit cycle. Getting the stormwater ordinance, procedures, schedules, and screening and tracking of those illicit discharges, that happens within the first year. And the PDC is doing some of that, to be able to piggyback on what they're doing regarding the ordinance and some of the policies and procedures that they're putting in place. So we're working closely with them to see what they're doing so we can not redo it.
And I appreciate Mike mentioning that, 'cause I'd forgotten to mention it earlier, is we are working with the PDC to address some of these issues too, because several of us are in the same boat, so to speak, so using the resources of the PDC to help develop some of this. So while we're gonna need staff to begin the implementation and some of these other things, work's already being done on behalf, on our behalf, by the PDC on some of this, so.
One of the other aspects that we haven't really talked about that needs to take place in the first year is staff training, employee training programs, so they understand the importance of the best natural practices and the policies for minimizing the risk to do the storm. And along those lines, we will also be helping stormwater pollution prevention plans and nutrient management plans for fertilizer information. And again, each year, there's a requirement for the annual report, which will be due mid-February, and we'll be posting it. The costs at this point are undefined. Part of what we're doing through our scope now is to try to find those costs and streamline those costs and make that, make sure that we get the most value for those dollars that are invested in this program. But as Mr. Meadows said, it will take additional staff, which is no way that we can handle this program without adding staff. And we'll probably also be looking at some changes to operational procedures just to comply with stormwater management and try to look at those good housekeeping procedures and best natural practices. Cost of non-compliance, there are some counties that have said, "We're just not gonna do anything to accommodate this." That's probably not the best strategy, because there are some serious penalties in here, which could potentially include jail time. I don't know that it would come to that, but just the credit should shake you up.
As long as they put the county administrator in jail and not the board to this county.
No, that's one of the problems.
Yeah, and take the deputy administrator, so you can have somebody play jackets with.
You get double time in jails.
Maybe get a discount.
My lord.
You get double time, you get whatever your salary is plus whatever they'll give you.
Well, I, you know, you may think Mike says that in jest, but I have- I am fully aware of a couple of counties that have said, because the turmoil at the state level, they're saying, "Let's just wait and see what happens." No. And again, what's doubly trouble for us is we are now in MS- we can't just turn our head, we can't. I mean, the folks that don't have the MS4 requirement may be able to buy a little more time, but we don't have that luxury at all.
And beyond the jail time, there is the clause in there for daily fines, up to $50,000. So the fines could end up surpassing what it costs you to comply. And I would suspect that if people, if local governments are ignoring this program, that DEQ is likely to make an example out of someone.
That's right, yeah, they'll be looking.
That's what cost them, what it would've cost them to comply.
Yeah.
But to all- look at this another way, this is a new regulatory program. The MS4 program right now only incorporates small areas of the county. So right now, it's relatively manageable for the county to set up this new program, because you're not doing the MS4 for the entire county. You are doing the stormwater management program for the entire county. Just talking about the MS4, you're doing it from a small, manageable area of the county for comparatively manageable costs. The MS4 urbanized areas will continue to grow as the population of the county increases and grows. With each new census, I would imagine those urbanized areas will get greater in number and larger. So if you were to make the decision not to move forward with the program today, eventually you'll have to, and at that point, it's gonna be bigger than it is now. So my message is that it's easier to start out a new program like this on smaller, more discreet areas like you have now, rather than trying to do it kind of now. That doesn't make it any easier to pay for, but it does from a management standpoint and a personnel standpoint, it does make it more manageable. And there really are some tangible benefits to these programs. We have a lot of cartiology in this area with caves and springs where these pollutants can get right down into our groundwater, and we have a lot of rural areas where residents rely on wells for the drinking water. And so we do wanna protect our water supplies so that we can serve residents of the county with clean drinking water. So there are some tangible benefits to this program. Additionally, we'll be improving the water quality of the surface water as well and looking at mitigating flooding and the problems as well. So there is some real tangible, positive outcomes to this program as well.
Question. I know, at least my perception is, we're talking about normal circumstances and everything. What happened in- and what would happen to major flood, I mean, that would hit the waterways through there?
Well, the calculations that are required to evaluate the quantity of stormwater that's gonna go up is going to look at 25-year, you know, fairly good-sized floods. So while you're not looking at a 100-year or a 1,000-year flood, you are looking at a relatively large event, so that the structures that are built are capable of handling that quantity of water and then detaining that water to clean it up as it's released. For those even larger, less frequent events, you know, we just have to roll with those as best we can. It's not cost-effective to design for a storm of that size.
Yeah.
And that's it for the formal presentation. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have at this point.
Our next steps, we will be filing the registration with DEQ before February 17th. We have the $4,000 in the budget. I believe Steve included that this year because we knew it was coming, so we've got that appropriated. Then the next deadline, I believe, is May for the adoption of the stormwater ordinance. Yep, so we'll have that coming for you.
And that's one of the things that the PDC is working on.
Right.
Would it not be advantageous for us or any other county, I don't wanna make it sound like it's just us or our town, but for any county to be measured where the water comes into their county and not where it goes out of so much?
To see what we're dealing with before we add to it.
Well, we need to know whether the people who-
Bring it to us.
Bring it to us are cleaning theirs up, and in turn, they send it to the ward Salem, Roanoke County, they need to check us and make sure. It seems to me that that's where your checking should be, rather than, as in the county, should be at the points where you're dumping it to someone else, which should cut down on your number of points.
Well, he did say something about catching samples or something. He said you weren't required to catch samples, but to verify what you was doing. So we could catch, I mean, that when it leaves the town of Blacksburg, for an example, I guess it would be good for them to catch a sample and to make sure that they were in compliance. And then, when it leaves us, or you could catch them before and afterwards.
When no water is flowing downstream, we need to check it again. We need to develop up some us and points, maybe not right at the cutoff, but somewhere after it has left all of these larger municipalities.
Just to ensure we know what we're dealing with before we have to take into account.
They could have people that's not doing a real good job, just putting out what they want to, and then when it gets down to somebody else and they say, "Hey, Montgomery County, y'all are really throwing us a bunch of stuff from somewhere," it just seems like that would be the place to take a look rather than worrying so much about what we're doing right here.
I think it's something to think about.
And that may be part of the illicit discharge program. While that's not necessarily the illicit discharge rule, we map and where other local government's outfalls enter into the county, and those will be the specific areas that we're looking at. So, you know, initially, we probably start with a visual evaluation of this county personnel and people without seeing the risk of it happening, which is definitely a good point.
I know that, you know, we've had a lot of dumping up, you know, a few aspects coming into the new group, but I do some.
We will also be advertising within the next two weeks for a stormwater engineer and hopefully have somebody onboard, give or take 30 days either side of the stormwater ordinance as well, 'cause got to move forward with that.
With this program being implemented, there may be a shortage on qualified stormwater engineers. Good ones, anyway.
Mike, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity. And if questions come up as we put this bottle away, just to follow up in time, Mr. Meadows has something he should answer for us.
Well, Mike and Carolyn Howard from Draper Aiden are providing a lot of support right now, and this is a big topic. I see John sitting out there. I mean, this is a big topic for all the engineers, 'cause any developer that's having to develop's having to deal with this, so. Thanks.
Need a motion, motion to go out of work session in a second. Have a motion in a second. Would the substitute clerk please call it off?
Supervisor Creep?
Yes.
Supervisor Tuck?
Tuck.
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 He ain't here, he's been all the last.
Supervisor King, I am so sorry. I don't know why I did that. Supervisor Biggs?
Aye.
Supervisor Gaber?
I have.
Chair Brown?
I'm more high.
And I don't think it's no any, any other business, so we're adjourned from this meeting.
Looking right at you.